Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Gubai Kikubu Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Quartey.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Remangsa.
Oi.
Senator Mark Uerbalau Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangavau.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki Eltop Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tavalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Yiree Bangalwips.
Oi.
Law Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Cry Marure. President Hockens Paulus.
Oi.
Mister President Anganyakorum.
Maria Kurum bodontira Senator Aldabel, Law Leader gid, bolongtigay gilgid raurele de Senator Marure adirge excuse. Law Leader.
Oh President, mutal maluwi tutal merga ma arbekel senators. Uh musa edel hetma el al longewal deira, tal for the special session again. Ma domes atenargide, Mister President ting ngalgora like, tanganisil tiimol ngatyal, or udalure redem. Uh. Kada momel molma, ndiakangaram. Ah R M sa for el muutra ten, magadamora bill calendar. Uh bill calendar, the first meeting, tanganimi, second reading, magadamora third reading, move the pass rather than final reading. A House Bill. Eleven dash forty-seven dash four, H D four, S D one.
Si na motion na madunge, second ma, meyate lew ma ngariya, soril momiga amintel giril tera ulvongal. Longiul, eh don tirakler gama liwetaitol.
House Bill number eleven dash forty-seven dash four, H D two, S D one. A bill for an act to provide for digital residency, to appoint the service provider, to administer the digital residency program, to create the framework for cryptocurrency exchange licensure, to amend R P P L eleven dash twelve and for other related purposes. Talul dasul mola, agutmakliya digital residency, emo appoint mal uve ngotragakli, a service provider, elma onoral, ra digital residency program, emo agutmakli, amo framework ra cryptocurrency exchange licensure, emo malod ra R P P N number eleven dash twelve, ma kupe birangod albelgul. Talul dasul mola, aludersia speaker Sabino Anastasia by request.
Si da taitol rabil na wima, Senator Ishal.
Mister President, nsa kanoa attention arbekla, damora page ten, se line seventeen. Magablabul gule, ah di saldi, saldi scasringi, ra ta ra gani teleport. Aludosul mola, amo director saklisi, uh. Republic of Palau, musa ede charter one or more digital banks, digital securities brokers or digital security dealers, together lo digital institutions. Eh Saal, se line twenty-one, ma line twenty-four, malda tak, kwa se, financial institution commission adurbelaw. Shall provide gate regulations concerning the digital banking sector following consultation with the banking sector and Ministry of Finance. Upon the prior indications of regulations concerning the digital banking sector, the financial institution commission may charter a digital institution. Se mal tobangali, klobul gule. A financial commission, mese financial unita giril ngariya, imar segidurjorra, a banking. Mong ho fullie, tayda magora direktara ora. Asanakler gora, atre tali, bado shpeer ngi, kada mal make sure, operation tal tgoi, la. Digital residency, ma cryptocurrency, adi abol, ish bingia bulbelawa, idir tgoira, money laundering, ma, whatever. Then, mo require a financial institution, mo come up with regulations. Solang.
Senator Tavalwal.
So, President, saula chairman sel blal iwi tgoi, bodiwak litel wasin, kada adurbelaw, mese sugumataka omuul, ngiril omuul lungin. La kaduuli, delbar, de durasiawu, lekada momesmo oklangiak, ti swa kadu li segidu lasi, giridem la tgoi, kada mulil lungin, ngara wintretelil. Andi berem namra, ti swa kadu li segidu, tru ulle lasi, abomu la tgoi, ngiridem alil lungin, enya mongila rubatelle ruul, solang.
Solang Senator Tavalwal, Senator Rudim.
Ma msaole, Mister President, miil tutau, elang at one forty-five A M. Mister President, aktimo express la reservationa katelul dasul mola, let ya gil mo partner, Minister of Finance, amo exempt relyability. Andi gukmo layabola operations agreement, pa kumesing segida komotri, mo kavosa aseltia. Number two President, looking back, domes, ekalul dasul mola, ma pass, natogora arbitration, matogora exempt corporation, matyalul dasueng. Eng kura mesa, kumesing wa la, burnia immunity, reagidu sertun konbali, mo operate, adurbelaw, shpeera, talapandala, adurbelaw. Ya, novin wat, agudungel girela, international finance, uh, security, egidya kundas, sari da damri gel ma, F I C, mal garikla egid. Di se lekado, F I C, chairman isala, mo mention F I C, axelala, ndi gel, gukla babiera F I C, me asin, walingita, se bom lungin masatiang. Egid recommendations, le gel recommendations, ra derek, adi bil, do shpeer ngi, mulu la ti e ra wa, alo nama, ra vi e ti, kado shpeera, adi B V. Ti butakmul wasin, lungil omgatmakliya lungil foundation, ra wa egidu lulas. President, adurul adat chensel mola, cryptocurrency, mal uve blockchain, egat chensel, se dhaal issue, dhaal issue ra. Le, report, ma X R P, amsa do cryptocurrency, tal la, amsa segidu medium, amsa segidu ra. Uh issue ngi, Mister President, esha finding ra committee, uh, kidawado urjor after the fact. La kosvak, la kadukti mo rati faringi lasi, lamu ai se, lamu toklakmuntan mom, bel agida diogi ulle, dimo raba stamping, asin, bol ai se, melora. Bel asel, emomemesa, sel, the reason, la ulal, de la, asin, sel M O U, adronel, a republic, ma, a president, a three of the news, la, November twenty-six, la twenty, twenty-one. Esel, emomemesa, sel news, kumul wasin, sel M O U, dha ka adon dangli, ta towa ngasel, ndi dhaal shur wasin, we polengeegidya mongora, tiang, madong dia. Esegidu, adra bulu, dhaal odangli, kidam dhaal odangli, kidam otte adra bulu, oon mungar nya, concern miltmokra, ongirulamungiruel. Uh, concern ngi, Mister President, dhaal, kungel girela, a technology, matogora finance, le ga, adurul adag domes, a chitu eni, ma I M F. A D B, ma World Bank, amsa da egid el alta, ma Bank of Hawaii, ma Bank Pacific, ma Bank of Guam, mania concern sertir. Kidam dek, mo egam lam kavosa system, ra decentralized banking system, ma centralized banking system, ma egad odangli. Di issue, dhaal nar se. Uh, adow da kloklar ngobar, ndaaklokliv, kidam motira krav rules, kada conform to the rules, matmokra international community. Kidah, di, mal small part, less than an ounce player, adurul ad, kada di recipients, la, lungil nesu, adra bulu, amutira kralu, adurul ad. Amo, men, concern ngi, Mister President, sel, wal awana, ablo kkelo, idhatetelaureol. Um murnya inconsistency, akmo, bebe time, kada, kada wala malgo ma gara bebe la tgoi, ewu, kuda, ekora mo dibe taru, bebe la tgoi. Tal towa P U C, ngaseltia, President, tabled, aludodongli, sa dapa sa rabat yet, ndaakadegi, butek, wasin, oludal alta. Salururinya committee, la, ndi liraula, wasin, nganiangan sasel, gumochia, reword, wasin, nsewe, ditilotobododudune, umer se. Ndaakal excuse, sa dapa sa tiang. Egan ngatyal ludasul mola, egid stand on its own. Egidatte, rugul, adminut, tiang, ndi ka adon ngatyal, mo yaklo, madangli, tiang, toktim, kese, adon dangli, ma se adib, skama, ma green light, egib, omgatmokli, badim, omesa, de uru riul. A Estonian bulu, aderek, blal voltun mi i, ma gen, beto konbali, lamu omgasa, le bulu ad, aderek, lamu start, rosig, a tetela, money laundering, it clean, akra, bulu adrogi. Esayya, omra, el alna, alta, omra la vacuum, omgatmok, omrala omniuta. El chensel, tetela, bulu ad, clean, lungil, omgat, malatoga terrorism, ma money laundering, blood money. Uh President, reservationa katelul dasul mola, mal detetelaureo, olbi la, ulau, ma blo, beela, tetelaurele, solang, Mister President.
Solang Senator Rudim, Senator Inabo.
President, amso, amso la, teal, el gora, ah Mohammed, tani, uh, President, tal, issue ra P P U C, uh, dimla hal. Hmm, gora, wayal, olgorenia, Senator Rudim, el wasin, wayak, gora, ovalo, ngasa, ngitang, el gora, amru ringi, el mo, makitara, tretele, urjor, tal blay. Uh Mister President, uh, kidama, kidawulgarira, P P U C, ma board, atir, me, madaduurtir, ulangi tartir, wasin, gidibis kamitigidu, one million. Eh beragamutel, beto adudui, ma, selborenia, udo de, kimse, udo de, yamul maskamiu. Ma, tagil ngi, nditamlonge, el usia babiera, el mail, lobangela, resolution, rapport, el kumul wasin, olabas, kamam, taludod, ra, era, December, thirty-one. Eh ayaki, eh, yo onesa ia, arala denki. Mong, kadamlo, mui ra, financial report, atir, wasin, mal beto adudir, mal se, in maski da time, nditira, dimla, ngangil, maski da time. Ma, tadiral, uh, uh, nom, kadamlo, ndingi, kumlasai, tamlangasi, ia aradaengi, len nga ra newspaper, langmas, aradaengi, ra fifteen cents. Ma, tadiral, la, uh, oduruklia babiera, mer olbi ra ulal, wasin, tamlangasi, ngir, January one, eh nga ra, front page, ra newspaper, sera Friday. El kumul wasin, la, pastrit, taludod, de, tongas ia, aradaengi, mong. Undi, ndimla kal, gora, intention, ra committee, wasin, tulas, ngitang, gora wayal, teydia, adital, time, se bedel, talvila, uh, available, merai, raula, regal, tabrolay, month, bedel. El ngao do, dam sa P P U C, bola, ngasa, aradaengi, mong, I hope, ndi kal, gora, uh, uh, mula, uldaswira, mula, uldaswira, gora mo, wasin, gora, lemaknita intention. Mong, actuli segi de President, actiral, mal, understand the concern, uh, Senator Rudim. Actiral, mal, madangil, wasin, mal, gora, elal, sel bodolar, sel gotal bas, el gukmutmur, gora wayal, digital space, gukmutmur, tarra, role la geza, ra bulu, ad, dila, tal, dangari. Mong, uh, President, ammal, dhaa confidence, ergid, len, dhaa, uh, we're not technically advanced, the society. Eh dhaa, uh, dila, da develop, ra, ai segi, the, uh, technically complex, uh, waya blockchain, uh, software, uh, se, luspe, ngi, uh, mengatmoklar, sel platform, ra digital currency. Mong, I know, wasin, gora, ba de regid, andi, ah, malu, merang, wasin, teyidil teal, sel bebe, el burnia, teal, eh, ngiridal ngu. Le, el, len alakla, tal teal, el guk albar, bebe ra, adial, tangukmodia, ta teal, mergi. Mong, ah, madangil, wasin, gora, amaringa, regid, tal decision, ndiral, il kodondas, wasin, la, dabo ra market, de, dabo ra, ra open bidding, ra wasin, sumamal, losig, ra, akonbali, il mo, mengatmokra. Uh, digital residency program, el gir, el girila, blurbelaw, eh, it might take a long time. Mong, kada di, omes, tel, wasin, multi, aler, ilal time, and, uh, ma, market conditions is right, eh, the madangil, wasin, ngiridal, uh. Diversify, ra, economic, with the digital space, tarra, uh, tetelila, most bedel, diversify, economic. Mong, uh, ndakluto, amsa, the floor leader, amal, le clear, on so del, wasin, ngaringa, uh, closure, uh, digital, uh, exchange, ra, bebe, ra, sina, ma, indial. Uh, tegidil, okya, artir, ngaringa, ngaringa, digital wallet, artir, ilangi, eh, dhaal, eh, dhaal, se, ilmo, parngi, sel digital wallet, terangia, is an opportunity, il, available, mergi, de, lang, se bedel, step into that. Uh, space, eh, mo, osa bedel, opener, ah, kuca. Taratale, telila, egay, sa, ra, blurbelaw, mong. I know, wasin, it's a difficult decision, andi, agundas, gang, mal, well worth the risk. Kada, hmm, beselul dasu, besel tetelaureor, eh, eh, advance the technology, kidah, uh, domes, ra, egal, uh, ngaidal service provider, el, dora, la, amadadu, ngi. Ndiral, man, ne present, a credential, ser ngi, kada madangil, wasin, ngaringa, present, ser ngi, ra, uh, blu, ramri gel, akonbali, ramri gel, it's checked by the security, eh, exchange, ramri gel. Mong, agundas, weing, hmm, se bedel, ulture, egid, eh, ngu, tegidil, uh, step, almora, ah, kuca, digital space, most bedel, diversify, ra economic revenue stream, mergi, eh, Mister President. Eh, dhaa, ngaral, tapay. Dhaa, ngaral, tapel, giril tal service, hmm, dimo, se bedel, ngaringa, dungu, eh, agumra, wasin, secured, uh, blockchain technology is very secure. Eh, ma, ay gel, uh, sel, uh, R N C root program, el tira employer, ngi, il, chikra, identity, ra, add, malu gation, ngi, uh, I think, is also secure. Ma, ulto, segi de President, eh, malu ngit, wasit, uh, let's make this decision, uh, ma, eh, damu, segi, dal gotal step, and I think, kada, uh, kadamora, alsel, eh, mom dangli. And then we can make better choices, eh, make better decisions, and namuria experience, ergid, and most bedel, mesang, wasit, tiang, war, alsel. Solang, eh, Mister President.
Senator Sangavau.
Sol, eh, President, ta teal, eh, vera, ol, se edel, secure, tiang, eh, dik, gulit, ome, deregal, buk, dikto, gora, shwe, giril tiang. Ah, otak, meringa, solang, la, chairman, uh, Wissin Minsel, benlo, gora, talib, smodi, tal guk, towa, P U C, Mister President. Agundas, ndi kal, nguil, nosmodi, kwa senda, dgoro, obat, tiang, al, luul, ma ku, kumsenkiol, noeng, walgora, tima, mong mal, saul, lamu, explain, ngin, mongi. Le, agundas, ngiridal, mimokli, mo, secure, tiang, al, nomarak, wasin, namu, inafa, eh, merko, sel guk, towa, P U C, ah, se edel, address, ngi, ra, kuca, taratime, nding, teal, se edel, uloyam, diu, ngi, mong mal, meringa, solang, segi. Oni, Mr. President, ta, uh, actal, gibal, meral, gora, dirga, obrado, swex, sel, direk, towa, immunity, ngat, tiang, al, el wa, service provider, el, el wa, aral, ngul, masang, eh. Kilometru, kuca, ngaringi, tegidil, du, kwa setabad, actors, sel, motmotel system, etiradi, albet, ringi, mongi, le, kwa, kasa, kama, ma, we did what we can, eh, mergo, immune, ra, kuca, towa, blurbelawa. Talib, dirga, gora, obrado, swed, el, agumra, kwasin, ngiridal, mongi, merit, ringi, kamo, ngi, merit, ringi, omes, eh, kwa setiang. Hmm, nguil, alai se, malu, bo, ngaram, gukmal, gora, mo, exempt, ringi. Shalong, eh, Mister President, ta. Ndiregal, nga, page five, tal, adala, billing. Wa, kadamal, limo, orre, eh, mong bulu la, sel, kwa, sel, ngaringa, most bedel, mengatmok, wa, era, regulation, sa bol, tgoi. Sel, nga, a section, ten dorira, number five, kwa se, Minister, most bedel, approve application, prior, and more, ayel, regulations, sel nyam, mengatmok. Sel, note, ledel, guk, madaduurti, ngel, bebe, ra, involve, balga, idu, urjor, kwa se, mal important, omrula, framework, or, me, ma, tetelila, me, before, obom, tour, tiang. Mong, agundas, weing, sel, sel, open a floodgate, el tu, tegi, and, tamla, so, isebu. Eh, walgora, dirga, eh, kada, kwasin, clown, merang, agid, kwa se, tegidil, service provider, uh, amo, obeta, egid, mong, talib, obrado, swex, sel sugum, kading, tal, sadut, pari, esakabelment, emdu, kwa, setir, egid, amo, onra, tiang. And lastly, Mister President, uh, actuli, maybe, for all we know, la, dhaal, related, el mortiang. Nding, nga, amal, nomarak, wasin, ndi kal, ndi kal, se bedela, document, ra, blurbelaw, el, el, the sign, ringi, merongi, eh, du, kwasin, it's a non-disclosure agreement. Egao, omes, indel, mora, towa, tool, private, alkonbali, el, el, tira, kuca, agree, mora, terms, atir, eh, dhaal, uh, government, giril, mimok, sel, omes, eh, regord, eh, Mister President, ma, actal, gibal. Akmle, asker, tiang, ndiakto, wasin, agamle, asker, ngi, ra, eh, mla, ngat time, si, provider, ngi. Eh, dimla, mel, mutre, la, mong, segi, ah, po, otia, wat, talib, obrado, sweg, giril, tal bill, eh, gamal, msa, ra, teal.
Solang, Senator Sangavau, Senator Quartey.
Solang, President, uh, clarification, Chairman, uh, Wissin Minz, sel, one million five hundred fifty thousand, el, todel, ma, P P U C, sel, rang, morulil, girela, arala denki, ra, January, mo, March.
Senator Inabo.
Oh Mister President, uh, sel domes, arala denki, mas, angara, fifteen cents, certain newspaper. Lamutel, aradaengi. Ndia, uh, mas, arala, alu, uh, uh, fifteen cents per kilowatt hour, actually, it's, talib, ngarba, bra, fifteen cents, it's fifteen point eight, akundas. Eh, esera, uh, algot, lemlegirin, mas, lemlegirin, mas, ra, uh, uh, fifteen point three, akundas. Mong, I think, my correct, uh, recollection, uh, allow, I say, mong, ngaringi, segi, dal, fifteen cents, lemle, eh, segi, dal, prior quarter, uh, fuel cost, the, under recovered, ndimla, al covering, lemlegas, ah, arala. Sel, recover, ringi, lemlegas, ah, aralu, by two point five million. Mong, hmm, ndi kal, se bedal, kumlasai, uh, la, chikra, P P U C, nding, sel, resolution, el, uh, bl, uh, adopt, ringa, board, eh, merongi, chairman, usia, cover, letter, ringi, May. Awase, tamongas, ir, segi, dal, fifteen cents, al sugum, ndi kal, mutjal, ludod, by end of December. Ma, agumra, mas, sugum, kading, tal, one point five million, al mastarir, eh, mong, ngaringa, ngasa, kla, aradaengi, nding, hmm, momakasai, ra fifteen cents. Is it right, and do you understand what I'm saying? Okay, uh, mong, um, let's say, ing, tongas, ir, fifteen point eight cents, and this, tegidal, one point five million, amokaber, fifteen point three cents, mandi, mong, mas, asel, point five cents. Segi, daktral, mal, masalari. Sendirag, isang, sel calculation, artir, el, L P S, or quarter.
Senator Quartey.
Um, no, blak tak.
Ndak, ndak, tulwasin, ndak, tulwasin, yang, hmm, totally, ndi kangas, kla, aradaengi, ngaringa, ngasa, kla, aradaengi, el sel, guk, additional, el, digi, real cents, uh, sel, dhaal, covering, isel, one point five million. Lemle, ra, alu, ra, el, al, last, the quarter, ndi kal, sel, previous quarter, el, kidam, le, covering, iloba, sel, two point five million. Solang, eh, President.
Ndika ngud. Sugum, ndi ka ngud, eh, the, bodushenkiyo. Clergan, war, olgon.
Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Gubai Kikubu Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Quartey.
Both stand twice.
Senator TJ Imru Remangsa.
No.
Senator Mark Uerbalau Rudim.
Yeah.
Senator Umi Sangavau.
No.
Senator Kazuki Eltop Sungino. Senator Andrew Tavalwal.
Yeah.
Senator Mason Yiree Bangalwips.
Oi.
Law Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
No.
President Hockens Paulus.
Oi.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki Eltop Sungino.
No.
Mister President, agak, kara, senkiyo, six, a yes, and six, a no.
Madat, talul dasul mola, el ngi, House Bill number eleven dash forty-seven dash four, H D four, S D one, amlamad, aulvongal, ngiul, ra, Senate. Law Leader.
Mister President, kadamlo, na, calendar, kid, kadamor, sel, resolution, calendar, eh, dhaa, ngaring, ding, ngaring, sel. Senetcho, intro solution, el. El mo. Eleven dash twenty, el, el mo, expressa support, ma, approval, uh, opportunity, el mo, purchase, real estate, el, habla, New York, Siri, el mo, establish, diplomatic mission, blurbelaw. Uh, tiang, gora, tiang, mal, kada, asan, ngi, mora, committee, gora.
Wissin Minz.
Eh, nding, gora, ontilaula, kuna, se, medrigol, regi, bol, se, edel, place, ngi, tal, adoption, calendar, uh, al session, ma, le, motion, el, suspend, the rule, se, bol, se, edel, place, ra. we have to say that we have to say that Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120 is approved.
We have to say that we have to say that Leader of the Senate.
Mr. President, we have to say that Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120 adoption calendar session will adopt the Senate Joint Resolution 1120.
Clerk of the House.
Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120. A Senate Joint Resolution expressing support for and approval of the opportunity to purchase real estate in New York City to establish a diplomatic mission that will serve as the permanent mission of the Republic of Palau to the United Nations and granting specific authorities necessary to ensure the successful implementation and purchase of properties for its diplomatic mission. The Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120 will alter the New York City diplomatic mission and serve the permanent mission. It will be approved by the United Nations. We have to say that we have to say that the Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120 will be approved by the Senate, Haukons Paulas.
Any discussion? Yeah. We have to say that the Senate Joint Resolution Number 1120 we have to say that Leader of the Senate.
Mr. President, we have to say that we have to say that we have to say that Missional Communications 11312 FIB solicited a comment to the Missional Communications 11313 Mr. Sugiyama and President Paulas for the PNCC Board of Directors Resolution. Missional Communications 11314 the State Legislature and President Paulas transmit a certified copy of the 8SL Resolution Number 103R12. Missional Communications 11315 is approved by the Senate responding to the date of November 2021. Missional Communications is approved. For Missional Business and Missional Business of the Senate.
Do you want to say something? Do you want to order? Leader of the Senate.
Missional Business of the President
Missional Business yeah. Leader of the Senate.
We have to say that we have to say that
Senator Agitaya.
I am not going to say that. I am not going to say that. I am not going to say that.
Do you want to say something, Senator Agitaya?
I don't know.
Senator Isal.
We have to say that 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 I don't know. Sometimes I put my trust on things and on people. We have to say that we have to say that tax reform we have to say that 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 digital currency is within 180 days. We have to say that 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 we have to say that
Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, we have to say that 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 because I will not be here until January. We have to say that we have to say that Mr. President. We have to say that we have to say that we have to say that we have to say that
Mr. President. We have to say that one day we will extend the term. Leader of the Senate.
Mr. President, we have to say that we have to say that we have to say that
We have to say that we have to say that we have to say that we have to say that we have to say that